Okay.
All right.
All right, so let's start off again. So we have representatives here from Palmary. Why don't you just give us a, give us a quick summary? Keep it short, please, on what you're looking to do concerning the building on Bacon Road.
Okay, this is Dino Balmeri, Richard. Thanks for talking to us last week, even on a Friday afternoon after you were at home. I apologize again, I called you at home and you took the phone. What, what I wanted to do this, Todd came to my, you know, brought to my attention that the building was in great shape, so I should go visit. I went to visit with Todd. The building itself, it was well-built. He explained me the history, I didn't know the guy that built it originally. He's got a lot of concrete footers, a lot of reinforced steel. There's no crack all the way around, the concrete floor inside is in great shape, and only needs new roof and new siding. Richard suggested, says before you go any further, make sure that the Ryan people are now, they're okay with that, they were okay with that, to move the road, save the building. But saving the building without zoning, it's worthless unless the trustees, and Todd says that he drives around there in Pinsville Township, there's a lot of people that they have both sitting outside, which I saw them myself on Sunday. They have a lot of things, they don't look as pretty as they can have this place. It's not that big, that's why we even think that it could be limited to just to this area. If there is a zoning changing, just pertaining to this particular subdivision, because we're gonna have 257 residents, and this is only 6,000 square feet. And it could be completely separated, landscaping and new siding and new roof would look good. But we don't have the zoning, and we appreciate the work, Richard, at least take it to this far, and Todd can actually take over and explain, because he knows more about this than I do, he sees it every day. Todd, can you please say something?
Yeah, are we looking to go with the, if we're looking to go with the storage, we think would be a big, a big asset to the community, but we need the zoning to do it.
If you had somebody lined up saying they're gonna maintain, put siding on, put a roof on, uh...
And operate.
Operate, maintain, and we're dying to do this, I would say was something I would be to look, consider. But when you say that the HOA wants nothing to do with it, then you look at, in the future, look, okay, new siding, roofs, fine, but what happens if a storm comes through and rip off siding or does something to the roof? Who then is in charge of that? Who's gonna take care of it? What happens when it needs repair? Who's on the hook for that? And at 6,000 square feet, that's not much storage anyways. If you're talking about a 60,000 square foot building or something, or that could really offer some vast amount of storage space, that might be someone to look at. But at 6,000 feet, what are you talking about, you know, a couple boats, make a car too? Like, unless somebody was online saying, "I'm ready to take this, I'm gonna take it over, maintain it, fix it up, I'm ready to do this," I see no reason to even entertain that option.
Todd, were you willing to take it over yourself, or will, you know, or is it too small, or we don't, you didn't think of it, or put another building mimic across the way, which will be 12,000? But that's just an idea, just, you and I never talked about.
Yeah, I think we would have to put together a plan on it and see exactly what we could do with it, and see if it could be taken over privately.
I think the existing building is an eyesore where it's at, and it offers nothing to the community in my mind, and like I said, it's not large enough to offer any type of substantial storage to people over there, you know, a couple people might get it, but then, then you get it, it's gonna happen, and then we're down the road. Who's gonna take it over? Who's gonna maintain it? And I just don't feel that it's something that offers much to the community, in the sense that we would, you know, redo a whole development outline to accommodate one building that really offers nothing to anybody.
It's its own.
What's the zoning on that, Richard?
It is FPUV. It's its own zoning district, that's the way that is set up, and it's something...
Rich, I thought from the corner of Blaise, all the way to the first house on Bacon Road was all commercial, is that not the case?
That is not the case. It's about 12 acres, a little over 1,000 feet long, 500 feet wide. There's a strip, it ends down here, can you see on the screen where my cursor is?
No, I can't see your cursor, but I can see the...
Just below the relocated pond, that commercial parcel end. Just below the relocated pond.
So how would the pond get relocated, out of curiosity? When did that get approved and by who?
It's, this is a proposal. What appears on this in red is the proposed redesign and curvature in the roadway, the relocation of the roadway, the weeding of the building, and moving one of the retention ponds slightly to this location.
So how many homes are gonna, how many more homes or how many less homes are gonna be built, and what's the reason behind this?
The reason was, this is Dino Balmeri, Todd brought it to my attention, because it was well-built, and normally those things have dilapidated, and that's why you take them down, and we didn't wanna take it to the landfill. That was really the reason. There's not really a lot of economic impact, it was just, it looks like an eyesore right now, but it could be nicely done with the siding, and since it's nice structure, that was it. And Todd may be willing to take it over himself, I'm speaking for him now, since I never spoke for him, but he can give you this idea. And we would, we actually will lose three lots here, and we can actually add it in the future phase, if we can. So it's really not, it's a lot of brain damaging to save this building, and I get it, you guys frustrated, but we wanted to have this meeting, and I appreciate it, so if there's no hope, then we'll have to knock it down. Todd, you have, are you willing to...
If we could, if the zoning is an option to do it, we could look at it and do a study on it and see, see if it's a, you know, a good idea to do it or not.
All right, so let me speak, gentlemen...
If you don't have the zoning, there's no point in going any further.
Gentlemen, all right, so let me pipe in, this is Chuck Hillier, I don't know if you can see me or not, but, so, I'm not opposed to it, there's just a lot of information for me to process with a little bit of time.
Oh, they're not doing too well. Hello?
Hello?
Hello, Todd?
Yes.
It's just me and you.
No, they're, they're still here, it's muted.
Oh, okay.
You guys are muted, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Well, that would make it a commercial, wouldn't it? All right, so Jeremy, if you need to cut me off at this point, feel free, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna pipe in. So I understand the relationship between the developer and the home builder with Ryan Homes, and I gotta tell you, it's a sweet little deal that has worked. And what I mean by that is the, the home builder is the one who presents the model, and when their salespeople speak with the home potential buyers, they can tell them whatever they want, and these people believe them because they should. When the developer comes in and they do their job, that's all null and void. And so, as much as what you're describing sounds like... I'm not pleased with the relationship, and this all comes back to the Villas. The Villas were told there was gonna be landscaping in front of their property by Ryan Homes. Ryan Homes says, "We're not the developer." The developer says, "I never promised that." So quite frankly, I'm not interested in working outside of what I absolutely have to, to make this development go in and call it a day. Because I don't like how these people were treated, and I don't trust you guys, no disrespect to you personally, but I don't trust the relationship between Palmary and the developer, or the owner of the home builder. So we need things clearly outlined. Everything needs to be in black and white, and any more of this stuff is ridiculous. I really wish you guys could take care of those homeowners and fix the landscaping that they were promised in this cozy relationship. So I'm interested in what you're proposing, I find it...
No, I know, I know, who's there speaking?
Chuck Hillier.
Chuck, I apologize, and Richard, I took over this, in the Villas, let's go back to the Villas. We put in the street end because we bought that from Mike DeSanto. And we never meet the client, we never meet the homeowner, so, and I know I worked with Ryan Homes for many, many years, I, I can tell you that, I don't know what they promised him, so I wasn't there when they sell, but we talked to the salespeople, they said they never promised the landscaping. For sure, we never talked to the owner, because we don't get to meet the owner, period. So I hope you understand that, it's nothing that I did, you know, and even now, this landscaping proposal for those ponds, you have to have a certainly, certain landscaping plans, and it says recommended, but not necessary, although not recommended, actually says for beauty only. And we talked to the people there, so I'm trying to please everybody, so I immediately got on it, because we were ready to do it like a year ago, but the subdivision was not finished. So I hope you guys don't hold me responsible, but if you have to, someone has gotta take the blame, but literally, I did not, as a developer, you know, you don't meet the owner. That's what I'm saying, sorry.
I, I understand what you're saying, but from my end and from the homeowners, I've got statements, signed statements from multiple people who live in that development. There's only 29 homes, and I think we got 11, I got 150 people who live there stating they were specifically told by Ryan Homes what they were gonna do with landscaping at the entrance on Lake Road and on those basins that were going in there. Now, in my mind, that's two different subjects. I get the basins, I get the basins are a infrastructure issue. Okay, I get that. The other part, though, the landscaping on Lake Road, in my mind, that's a miniscule cost, and you guys could resolve that issue with those homeowners, and you put a lot of trust, but through multiple conversations that we've had with Palmary, and multiple conversations that we've had with Ryan Homes, everybody has chosen not to. So from my standpoint, I would like to help you, I'm very intrigued with what you're offering, I don't know how my fellow trustees feel, but I'm inclined to say, "I don't trust you, I don't trust you," and that's kinda where I have the belief that when something gets resolved. And Jeremy, I hope I didn't cross any lines there, I'm not trying to do anything, I'm just, I'm being totally honest in how this was presented. It's too cozy of a relationship, and it's not fair to the people who buy homes, when the builder can tell them one thing, and the doggone developer can just say, "I didn't know that, I didn't meet those people, and I didn't promise nothing, therefore I'm not doing it." It's not right.
Well, if you want me, Chuck, if you want me to do it, I'll do it, the landscaping is not the, the end of all, I just don't like, if you put yourself in my shoes, I never met those people, I liked to meet with them, who the heck promised those things? Certainly wasn't me. But if I have to spend the money to put landscaping and make the trustee happy, so you guys don't get phone calls, or you get a thank you, I'll do it. I'm here all to please, because I'm gonna be doing a lot more work over here, so I don't wanna have a bad relationship with the trustee, and Richard can tell you, immediately I got on it. We weren't gonna put even, we didn't even wanna put the pool in this year because of COVID, and then a couple residents were upset, and was not obligated to do it on Fairway Pond. I, I went ahead, I says, "We spent the money, we gotta do the pool anyhow," so the people were not complaining. So I'm all to please, if he's reasonable, but I just hope you know, Chuck, I have, I understand that you don't trust us, I wanna prove to you that, you, you know, sometimes the homeowner lies, as you know, they, they claim that they have some things that they, they really don't, but I'll be happy to do what you think is reasonable to do, and I'll do it.
Well, I thank you for your, thank you for your, your offer, we will take you up on it, and it's, it's not that I think in this case the homeowners are lying, because there's too many of them. There's too many of them, and the stories are the same, and I believe them. So I have never seen a development that... Where landscaping wasn't, but let's move forward and get this over with, and then let's continue this conversation on what you're proposing, but I need more time than a little Zoom meeting here for 15, 20 minutes, 30 minutes.
I talked to Michael also at Township, and I told him, I says, "I'll do whatever it takes to make those homeowner happy." So we did do the ponds now, and we'll do the landscaping, if that's okay with you, Chuck.
All right, cool, yeah. Mister, let me just say, Michael, real quick here, and I'm, let me clear, this is no quick quote, quote, boy, that came a common term in our country, but there's no quick quote on this, we will listen, we'll hear what you guys say, but, you know, let's, let's go forward from there.
All right, thank you, thanks, Chuck.
Thank you, gentlemen, Michael.
Chuck, this is Mike. I did wanna point out to you that I did not contact Dino Palmary until about six weeks ago, and since I contacted him, I thought he'd be very responsive to the conversations and trying to find a solution. I just want you to know he worked with us, we hadn't got to his conversation today.
So when you sent the letters out, who did you send them to?
Dave Wager, who's no longer with the company.
Okay, but it went to the company at the time?
It went to Dave Wager.
Okay, of Palmary.
Yeah, Palmary.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, so it did go, it did go to a representative who worked for you at the time, so it never got to you, we'll go from there, thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Chuck, Chuck, so, one more time, and then we're done with this issue. I called Michael, and Michael made it very clear, he says, "We don't wanna get a complaint, and neither the trustee." And I told Michael, I said, "I'll do my very best to make sure that you guys don't get complaints," and that's what I told Michael. So I've been working with them, and I immediately hired Todd, because the weather is good, and do what we have to do, and I'll continue to do that. Sometime, you know, homeowner becomes very unreasonable, so we, I've been there, because I build houses as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thanks, Chuck, and thanks, Michael.
This is Josh, I just wanna chime in on the storage building. I don't have a huge interest in maintaining that there. Having a storage building behind residential properties could cause issues in the future. Right. It's an eyesore now, I know you said with new siding and a roof, it could be cleaned up, but I prefer to see the plans move forward as they were originally designed, road where it was, building come out, that's just my feeling.
I'm gonna echo Josh as well, I just don't see that it offers much to our community, that it would be a viable option to redo the development specifically for that single building that really has nobody lined up, ready to use it. I just, I echo what Josh says, I just don't, it would take a lot of convincing, I'm just letting you know now, it'd take a lot of convincing to see a reason to make that an option.
All right, so let me pipe in real quick to both of you. So having, having lived right next door, Lake County, part of the homeowners association, having served on a board of a homeowners association, and understanding the deep restrictions that we have within those developments, having a structure like that would be very beneficial to the HOA members. I know that right now, they said they don't want, but it's too quick of a dismissal. I, I think it's worth exploring, and then, and then go from there. Then if they say no, okay, but it has a lot of potential to...
He said the HOA doesn't want it, so unless he...
So you, so you guys know that it's not that many people that are living, that I, you can actually take a poll right now. I talked to the people that manage the association, they said typically, you know, a structure like this, the homeowner is gonna, what am I paying for it? You know, I don't wanna pay for this structure. So that's all I'm saying, I'm not saying that we really took a poll and went around every residence that are there, because there is not enough of them, you know...
Well, that's why the HOA represents the homeowners, they're the ones that are in charge, you know, pull the homeowners, the HOA makes that decision, that's their job. So if the HOA is saying they're not interested, now if that changes, the HOA says, "Hey, we want it, we'll take it over, we'll put it into our plans," all those things where there's somebody to be held responsible perpetuity of that building, that is by greed, that's one thing.
All right, let me ask a question, because this is critical to the conversation. Is the HOA board the developer, or are they elected members of the community? Because in Lake Erie Shores, was the developer until 51% of the properties were sold, or no, I think he wrote like 75%. So at what point you have 100% elected membership telling the management company what they want? Is it there yet?
At the very end, yes. I, I think so, I'm not sure under percent on this one, because it's not a, I believe it's on the very end.
So right now, basically, the board has no powers at all, so who is the management company saying that the HOA doesn't want it? Is it the developer?
No, the HOA said typically, that's why they said, this is hypothetical situation, it says they're gonna have another expenses, they got the pool to maintain, they got all that stuff to maintain, and all of a sudden this can add another maintenance, and how do you deal with that? It's a little complicated if you give it to the association.
Who's the management company? Let me skip this conversation for now, come back to another point. We have a... I know you guys...
I don't remember the name of it, but I'll be happy to talk further. Todd, did you have anything to add? Basically, I hear the trustee loud and clear, that it's an uphill battle to do that, even though we had a good idea. I just hope you guys understand, this is not really a financial benefit, it's more like to save this building. But if the trustee, they're gonna have a hard time, or we have a...
Well, I'll make it easy on you, nobody is emotionally attached to that building in the least, so saving it is nothing that was even on our radar nor a concern of ours. So know that moving forward, that the only reason we would be considering it is because you have a dire use or a viable use that would look good. But me, I believe, at least Josh and I, or Chuck can, but based on what we're, I've heard, is that we have no interest in that building, we have no desire for it to be saved. So unless it's something that you guys can present, a viable, reasonable plan moving forward, that there's some real desire for that to be there by somebody else, I just don't see a reason for it.
Todd, based on this conversation, they've been very clear, and I appreciate you guys' honesty, what do you think we should do, Todd?
Well, we need, we would need an answer if we could, if the zoning is even possible to do it. If it's an option, we could explore the use of the building.
Pull that map back up, please.
If not, then we just go forward with the original plan.
One second, please pull the map, uh, the map back up on the screen, whoever was controlling that, okay, hang on.
I mean, the whole idea is to add something to the community, not, you know...
Right. What's about, the eastern, the southeastern corner of that building, what is the distance from the corner of that building to the lot line? That red box?
Oh, the red box on top.
That's right on top of there, that's what I'm saying. What's that distance, do you know?
To the corner, I think at 25 feet, I'm not sure, but I think it's 25 feet.
The rear property line.
The rear property line, yeah.
Would you, I mean, you got the house there five years when this thing started, you know, then what? When something goes wrong with siding, or somebody vandalizes it, and it's in your backyard, then they're gonna be calling us to make sure that gets taken care of.
I thought that property is, that's, none of that property was part of this project, that was all commercial, I thought.
It was at one time, I think.
One time, it doesn't look like now.
Street, Chuck is commercial. So, sorry, commercial, yeah. This is commercial, Chuck. I thought both sides of that, commercial.
This is commercial right here. This was, but we changed it when we made the PUD.
We changed that section too?
Yeah, there was some commercial on the corner, but we, we made that all into part of the PUD, if I believe.
Right.
Yeah, we, we kept a strip from Blaise and then up to where that pond is, wherever the property line is, so that's its own parcel.
Yeah.
You guys leveled all those trees in the last few months, that's the area you were talking about.
Yes.
And the building on that property, you said, was FPUV.
Right.
That makes sense. All right. You guys aren't interested in that building. Okay.
Like I said, if somebody's lining up and saying, "I really want this, and here's my plan, but just some casual idea," and to proxy those three or four lots, because I foresee the people down line, someone has in that building, or somebody using it, making noise, or whatever it may be, right? That those homeowners that buy that property will be calling us to do something about that building that's in their, you know, line from their house.
So you're saying if we had a user for the building, it's, there's an option there?
If you had somebody that had a plan, and we could see something that was very viable, or they really wanted to use it, it's impossible, but at this point, as a concept, just because, I just don't see a reason for it at all. I'd rather it's gone, I would rather it's gone.
That way it's not right in somebody's backyard.
Yep, same. I've been doing this too long, been at it about nine years, but I've learned enough that when you leave stuff out of the control of the homeowners, that close to the back of their house, it becomes a headache for us down the line, and benefits nobody in the, in the long run, except maybe the person that owns that part, part of the property. So in an instance where it really offers nothing to the greater good of the community, that maybe a couple people put a boat there, I just don't see how it's gonna benefit, benefit us to make that change.
Todd, can you run a business out of there, some sort of a clean business out of there, so you can save it, or no?
No, we wouldn't approve a business that close to, in the residential area, that close to the homeowners anyways.
Is this, is Chuck, who's, who's speaking?
If not, forget it.
Yeah, I guess at this point, I, I think, based on what Chuck just said, the only viable option is if the HOA is accepting ownership, maintenance of that building, so that we know in perpetuity that we can hold somebody's feet to the fire, if something goes wrong, get it repaired, et cetera. I don't think, unless that option is there, I don't think that anything on the table will make sense to us.
Yeah, we'll look at it one more time, so Todd, I think, I hear it loud and clear, basically, they don't wanna...
Right.
I appreciate what they're saying, I think it's very clear that it'd be difficult to even change it and do for business or whatever, so we'll look into that a little further, but we appreciate your candidacy and the whole thing, but we can switch over to, thanks for, for at least entertaining the idea, and thanks all of you guys, but Todd, you had a great idea for the, the pond in the back, is this the time for you to bring it up?
There's a proposed pond way in the back from the, from the township to be built, Stormwater? You guys know about that?
Yeah.
Do you have any idea when that's gonna happen?
We, potentially some work late this year, towards spring.
Again, Todd, another great idea to save people money, so Todd, can you explain, since you do this for a living?
The development needs the dirt that's there, and we were wondering if that could be incorporated somehow. We may need dirt. Be using that dirt on, on the site.
Todd, it's also possible the township may need that dirt.
Okay.
Todd, we don't know, we've been, we've been in communication with Stormwater, their communication's going right now, trying to get more of a timeline set up, there's a number of things in the, in the works, we, I don't have an answer for you. We were told, we already have trouble from the ground, and then we were told later this year, and now it's looking like it might be the next year. I wish I had a darn answer, because this is crazy to us, we want it done, we want it done yesterday.
So you're saying the development...
We just saw, we just saw it on the drawing recently, and we're thinking if, if we could get the dirt from there to help the township and the development, but I know timing is everything.
Are you, are you saying you basically would dig the pond, so you could use the dirt, half the dirt that, or what's the proposal there?
Well, I think that, I think that Mr. Palmary's willing to work with you guys on the dirt, he needs the dirt, and you guys need to get rid of the dirt, so...
No, explain clearly, we can get the dirt from, the way that the engineer designed this subdivision, there's plenty place we can dig and create ponds. So to, you know, this will save the township a lot of money if we can get the dirt from there, and then we don't have to do all this, what do you call that, Todd?
All the little ponds around to...
All the ponds around, that it could be, you know, we have the dirt outside, so I don't want anybody to think that we're trying to get away from not doing it, it just that this will help. If he, timing is everything in life, if you don't, if this would be perfect, you guys do that, we take the dirt, it'll be perfect, so you don't have to take it out of there. If you do it a year from now, and we already done with this, that means that you gotta pay a lot more money to get that dirt out of there and take it somewhere.
Dino, I, this is Mike, let me reach out to Lake County Stormwater and see if they have any issues with you digging dirt out of there now, or whenever you're ready, and I will get back in touch with you, that's still another trustee's discussion, but the first step is to find out if Lake County Stormwater will even allow you to dig there. I just don't know if I fit, so I might have to touch base with them on...
I'm sure they would under the, you know, preparing it, or drawings and do it properly. Am I right, Todd?
I, I don't know the answer, I, I just thought on the plan, and we thought it might work out for both of us.
Okay, yeah, we'll...
And see, I will find out, that's the next step, they'll permit us in there, and then the trustees, and you can talk again.
And Michael, how do you, if you build that back there, or Todd, how do you get back there to take the dirt out of there? Say we did the subdivision, there is a road there by the railway?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
There's a road there already.
There's a little pool back there too, there's a little pool, pool house, right?
That's on the other subdivision behind you.
Okay. All right, Michael, can you get back to us, to Todd?
I will, I'll get back, yes.
And Michael, I'll continue to work on, you and I continue to work on Fairway, on the Villas, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
And again, thanks you guys, um, and I'm glad that we talked. I think that, you know, we have to commu, I appreciate your communication to us.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Dino.
Bye, bye guys. Thanks.
And no, Chuck, you didn't cross any lines there.
I did, uh.
Thank you.
Yeah, figure out to turn this off.
Okay. A mere hour and 15 minutes going through the rest of this.
All right, ready, go.
Okay, CARES Act expenses. I, and we don't have to make decisions today, but I, you know, we know we've got money to expend and, yeah.
In the, uh, in this appreciation of time that we're short, why don't we circle back since it's not a pressing issue? I, I think, what do you think, Chuck?
Okay. Okay. Uh, Chuck wanted to talk about transient vendors.
Yeah, community events on top of the list.
I sent you updated.
I don't have it.
It's only yesterday.
He updated it.
I updated, it's updated on the, in the drive and I sent you the email.
Can we put that at the end of the list now?
Put what at?
Community event. He took it off. We don't have any. Movie night was canceled. And family fun day. There's the, well, there's, we, we need to know what's going on with the funds for movie night. And then he told us, he's, he's saving it. We can use it next year.
The, uh, fund flits agreed to let it roll over to next year.
That in the email or where was that?
That was yesterday afternoon when I talked to him. You and I talked yesterday and I.
Yeah, well, I didn't know that they agreed to. Roll the money.
Well, that was just, well, okay.
All right.
Sorry.
You guys know?
I just asked him.
Yeah, one earlier. Okay. So we probably should have had a meeting to discuss it being canceled before we canceled the two, in my opinion. And then we got the email from Ron Graham suggesting, but I think we should have had a meeting to discuss.
Okay.
Just by, I mean, we could make that decision today and then post something this afternoon.
Right.
Okay. Let's move on. Mike?
Chuck wants to talk about transient vendors.
All right, I forget the specifics of it other than at the time, um, it was Spectrum, I think, right? And then they were coming in. So yeah, so it goes to, how do we, what can we do when somebody? So Jeremy, this would be more with you, Rich, maybe you, I'm not sure. But the situation we had with Spectrum is they were canvassing in the neighborhoods, um, very actively all over the, all over the township. Um, they came to my house and I, and the gentleman was not wearing a lanyard. I asked him if he had a lanyard. He said he, he left it in his car. And I said, well, I tell you what, um, when you leave my doorstep, you need to go get the lanyard on. And, uh, cause if you don't, then you can't, you know, you have to get a permit. So he said, okay. And he finished his conversation and then he left. And instead of, he went right to his car, but then he drove to the next street over and then it continued. And then I checked with Harley and Rich, Mike, found out he had not registered. So the question I had was in situations like this, um, and I found out from other people where he was at. And then I found out also, I think he was in Gabe's neighborhood too, um, or somebody else from the same thing. So when they're doing this, what can we do that gives us a little more teeth to go back? It was a clear violation. If there was a misunderstanding on his end in the first part, it sure as heck didn't end up that way. He, he intentionally chose. What can we do about situations like that and how do we improve our position going forward?
Couldn't we just call the sheriff, right? Cause it's a violation.
Let him answer.
I'm asking though, can we call the sheriff?
Chuck asked you. Call the sheriff. And I know that, uh, Rich, Jason, Harley, we've been working on this issue, um, what we could do. And I know that we certainly could violate him on that. And I know we had an issue with, uh, active pest control too. Same, same kind of thing. Um, and so Jason and Rich, if you guys wanna speak to the conversation, I think you guys talked about it again last week. And that's actually where the, uh, limited home rule thing came in a little bit too. Cause there's less we can do because we gotta stay with the, the revised code. Uh, but, uh, Rich and Jason, I know we were, were working on this issue. If you guys wanna speak to it a little bit.
Uh, I mean, I mean, yeah, the, the biggest thing that ties our hands is the Ohio Revised Code. So a violation of, of a transient vendor is a minor misdemeanor. Um, so the maximum penalty you could impose for that would be $150. Uh, right now, our resolution calls for a hundred dollar fine. Um, we could boost that up an extra $50. I'm not sure that that would. In fact, I'm pretty sure that that wouldn't do it. That wouldn't fix our problem. Um, I think if ultimately, if we really wanna get this as much under wraps as we can, then I think we'd have to look into the limited home rule. Um, and then we could craft, you know, I've seen other townships with limited home rule, um, who have escalating penalties, um, you know, first offense is a hundred bucks, next one's 200 bucks. Um, they also have provisions in there, you know, a violation, um, means, makes you ineligible for up to a certain period of time to get another permit. Um, whereas currently our, um, resolution doesn't have anything. Our resolution is essentially, you just have to register. Uh, there's really not much room in there for, for Rich to deny it as long as they're submitting the right paperwork. Um, but right now I would say ultimately our hands are pretty tied. Um, but if we looked into the, to the limited home rule township authority, you, we'd have more options at our disposal.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, this is the first, we've talked about limited home rule in the past without a good reason or a specific thing we wanted to address. But it seems like this is an instance where that would help us and that, that may help push us into that.
Well, that's why I brought it up last year because it also gives us a lot more zoning control for other things as well, which is a big deal for us as far as buildings go and repairs and those type of things, buildings. So when we, when we discussed it last year, but then for whatever reason, it kinda got shoved to the side. But I think that for the same reason, it gives you more teeth in zoning altogether when you have that whole rule. So.
Yeah, I think overall it gives you more teeth and a lot of things that you can do. I do think, like Josh, what you said, that this is a little bit more concrete of a, an example of why it would make some sense. So, um, certainly I think it's worth some discussion. Otherwise, you know, we can pretty much just keep doing what we've been doing, which is the hundred dollar fines for a minor misdemeanor and that's.
Some more information on home rule, limited home rule.
Yeah, because we brought this up, real quick. We brought this up last year and we got, it got pushed aside and we said, we'll talk about it later and this and that. So.
Things happen.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, so I don't want that to happen again because.
Yeah.
Time that we continue a real conversation about exploring it. Uh, Concord did it last year. I know to much of their benefit for many different reasons. And I think that it would suit us well to actually start looking at it hard and, uh, as a real option.
Yeah, I think, I think we would be happy to, well, sorry, Josh.
I think it died out. We didn't have any specific things we wanted to address.
Yo, timeout. At the beginning of the year, January, February, I said to you, the trustees wanna form a JED, community reinvestment area and limited home rule. Give me a set of priorities, cause I can't do all three at the same time. And you said, well, then work on the JED and the CRA first, and then we'll go to limited home rule. I'm right in the middle of the JED and the CRA.
So how much is there with, with doing limited home rule, Mike? What is it involved doing and learning about getting information? We can get information. That's what we're asking for.
Uh, we'd be happy, we'd be happy to work on that for you guys, get you some specifics on what it would do and what we'd need to do it. So, cause I know Mike's, Mike's working hard on the JED and the CRA and all that kind of stuff. We'd be happy to, to work on that.
Do you wanna, we can talk to Mike, Mike Lucas, see what they've done with it over in Concord?
Yep.
And whatever else you can. You know, pros, cons, and then, I mean, it sounds like something we're all interested in and then how do we move forward, obviously?
Yeah, absolutely. And we can, and we can work with Mike, but Mike, we can, I mean, I think we can take on most of the work. So you can continue what you're doing.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, uh, Jeremy, this is Harley and I, talking about limited home rule. With that, would we be permitted to issue citations for penalties for zoning code violations? Or would we still have to take it through the court system?
Probably, well, we're in the process to know the answer to that question.
Yeah, I, uh, before I could give you an answer, we'd have to start researching some of that. Cause we, we have a general idea of it, but once we dig into it, we'd know. I'd be able to answer that question, you know, a month or two from now after we do a little more research on it.
All right, let's move on to the next topic. Uh, Mike, health insurance broker?
Yes, uh, regrettably Fred passed away. And does anybody care? Do you want me to call Slowy Insurance and say, who's our new broker? We need to get ready for this fall's renew, renewing health insurance or looking at it? Or do you want me to look to someplace else?
I, I personally have been happy with their agency and they have a relationship with us and through medical reasons. So I think at least where we're at now, it's almost all right. So we need to start working on the renewal now, really.
That's why it's here.
So I think it only makes sense to get, go there. And my opinion is if there's a pickup this year, then, then we can have an avenue for next year to renew early. But at this point in the game, I think, uh, it would be best to.
Well, this is when we usually start looking at it, so.
That's what I'm saying, right? Can you ask whoever the new, whoever our new rep is gonna be, ask him to maybe stop into our next meeting? Sure. So we can meet them and.
They would expect to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cause my understanding was from talks with Fred is that it was sort of, uh, parent agency type of situation where Fred really was the entity and he worked under the umbrella of Slowy Insurance.
Something like that.
Right. So are they replacing that entity or, you know, what's their situation over there? I think that's an important question. Sure.
Absolutely. I'm glad to get into it. I just wanted to know if anybody had a preference.
All right. Next on the agenda is fence setbacks, says Gabe.
So currently our fence, or Harley, you're allowed to go right to the property line, right? So this came up, my grandma brought it up because her neighbor put a fence up and her driveway runs along their property line down the side of her, so her house, right? The driveway goes past the side of her house, goes into the back and opens up. The neighbors put it, which is very close to the property line. The neighbors put a fence up right on the property line, which now eliminates the possibility of her being in the driveway and opening up car doors, uh, because that fence is right on the property line based on where the, um, driveways are. So I don't know if this is just a unique situation and we don't really have driveways in the township that meet this in other situations. And do we look at in an area where they have a driveway? Um, do we look at some setback for when it's on the driveway so people can safely get in and out of their car? The other thing is they put a gate that opens out into her driveway on their fence. So the gate opens up and it opens out into their, to her driveway. So it's, yes, because it's, I have a personal relationship, but if any county resident brought this up, I think it would be valid for discussion just solely based on those two things. It eliminates their use of their driveway in a sense. Now, I know a property owner has a right to put a fence up too, so there's, where's the balance there? But then also with the fence opening up, uh, does it, you know, opening up into somebody else's property, is that a viable option with the fence as well? So that's kinda just what I wanna discuss. Do we look at when it's on a driveway, um, a different setback? If that's something that we feel could be a concern? And also the fence opening up into somebody else's property?
It's very common to see a three foot, right? Well, let's, Harley respond to some of that first and then we ask questions.
Um, I did some research, um, since it was mentioned that it was gonna be brought up, uh, fence setbacks. Um, there's a couple of things that I need to discuss with Jeremy and Jason. Uh, chapter 971 of ORC discusses fences and specifically talks about partitioned fences, which are fences that are located on the boundary line. And they are permitted per ORC partitioned fences, um, in unincorporated territories. And, which is us. Um, so I'm not sure if we have the authority based on this, uh, to, to require a setback in our zoning resolution. There's also the question of adverse possession, which is like taking a property essentially if someone sets back their fence so the neighbor can utilize that space. They could, after I think it's like 10 years, they could ultimately take that land, make possession of the land or take an implied easement of some sort. I don't know all the, I'm not that, I don't get paid that much. But I still have more research to do to, to see if it's something that is a discussion we can even have that's, that we're having.
Do we let people put driveways on property lines anymore or is this just a?
That's, yeah, that's what I was wondering. Is this an anomaly that doesn't like that?
Can somebody put a driveway on a property line?
Yes.
Okay. So I mean, my, my thought is. Right. If I'm a property owner, I want to put a fence on my property. I should not be limited because my neighbor put a driveway on the property line. I want my fence five feet off the property line so they have room.
And that's what I said. They also have rights too. So it's.
On the flip side, the whole gate opening out on the, the other person's property probably isn't proper either.
Right.
I mean, you can't assume you can use your neighbor's property to open a door or open a fence gate. That gate to swing in.
Right.
Um, but yeah, I don't wanna.
And like I said, now that was my question, which you answered is, does driveway is right at the property line? Is this something that, because my grandma's house is 30 years old, it doesn't happen anymore? And this is something that we won't have to face? But, uh, you know, is this something that we could face in the future? And is there anything that we should look at and especially the gate opening thing? My understanding is that it opens out. I guess I can confirm that with it, but that's what she told me, uh, that they put a gate right that opened out into her driveway. So.
Yeah, it's interesting.
So the driveway's posted on the ground right now.
Um, so.
Or you got a car there.
So is the question then determining if we cannot require setbacks for fences, do we want to require a setback for driveways for paved surfaces? Because as right now, it's a patio, they can pave that patio right.
Or not require any additional requirements.
Yeah, I mean, I'm the one that's, you know, I don't like the kind of requirements, but also don't wanna avoid us having problems. So I guess in the same sense, with the fence opening up, if you have driveways on a property line, you then create a scenario where the car doors open up on another person's property line. You get out and walk into their yard. So, you know, that's, that's the situation. And that happens at my grandma's because it's right there. So you open the car and you get out of the car and sometimes if it's too close, you're stepping onto their grass. So.
But even think in, in barefoot, I mean, of the way those lots are all set up.
Right.
It's the exact same thing as driveway on the property line. So there are fences.
Yeah. So like, again, I don't wanna create any new regulations, but also this is something that could downline, start causing us issues if we have a ton of driveways that are in a similar situation. Um, yeah, I know. Is that something that home rule would change the ORC requirements? I don't know, you know, so maybe add that to your, uh, investigation when you start.
Yeah, that'll be something we'll look at. And we've been having pretty regular meetings with Harley and Rich about stuff like this. So we'll, we'll add that to the, to our agenda, um, to make sure we have good answers for you guys on that stuff.
Yeah, cause I think like Josh, so fence obviously could impede the use of the neighbor's property. And like Josh, like driveways online, you're then forcing people to almost go onto the other person's property as well. So we find a balance somehow to make sure everybody gets fair use of their property without any, uh, obstruction.
Right, right. Yeah, so we'll definitely.
Right. And she, yeah, so.
All right, are we done with that?
Yeah.
All right, Michael, what do you got next?
Uh, next is, uh, the CRA. One of the steps in our application is we have to produce, provide evidence that we have spoken with the school boards about community reinvestment area and we talked to them about what their options are and rights and so on. And that's a pretty short discussion, but we need to go meet with them. I sent them a certified letter to Auburn and Riverside. I've talked to both the superintendents. They understand. Uh, but I'm looking for a trustee to go to a meeting with me and we can set it up mutually. But we need to sit down and talk with them. It's a requirement as part of the application process.
So again, instead of Jen, if I can go with you, we can, or with Jen and Kalis and you, and me and you?
Yeah, and same with Auburn, yeah.
Oh, yeah, Auburn.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, cause they're.
Right.
They're, they're.
I get it, right.
Yeah, so that's all. I just think that it's gonna be Gabe. I'll work with you to set up a meeting. Sometime in the next 30 days. I mean, it's not urgent, but it's part of the, one of the steps in the process. I'll probably get the maps from Dave Redachi today. Um, yeah, we're, by the next meeting, we're gonna be really, really close. Yeah, it's, it's almost there. Okay, uh, the regional detention pond, uh, Josh wanted to talk about the regional detention pond.
Can you pull up that letter in that map, specifically the map?
Yep, yep.
Um, so Mike had a letter from Viral Science in the folder.
Why he's pulling up before you, can I circle back on what Chuck brought up with the transient vendor, just so I don't forget? So are we allowed to call the sheriff?
I didn't.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. In the past, somebody says, hey, this person came to my yard. I asked him for a thing. They sent me email and they said they didn't have a vendor permit. Um, I've instructed them to call the sheriff's office. Can we still do that? The sheriff will come out and say, do you have a permit? No, it's in violation of the township resolution?
Um, Jason, do you have something on that?
Yeah, no, you can certainly, um, you know, in dealing with active, I think I've found seven sheriff reports from active between Concord Township and Payneville Township. So yeah, you can certainly tell them to call the sheriff. So they're not gonna.
Homeowners.
They can't come out there and arrest the guy.
Sure.
But they can certainly make a report and, you know, explain, you know, hey, you need to have a permit, you know, go talk to Rich or talk to who you need to talk to. Um, but yeah, you can definitely call.
And that'll give us more teeth too when we file our complaint against them if the sheriff has a report and who it was exactly and all that, right?
Exactly. Good, it's good evidence.
Okay, good.
It's gonna become our evidence, yep.
Good, thanks.
Having, having said that though, it's like, I'd rather have a sheriff on the road patrolling than chasing down transient vendors. So if there's another way, which I know we're all on the same page, you know, it's just.
So if there's another way, which I know we're all on the same page, it's just ridiculous that you even have to do that.
But like I said, I think you, like you just mentioned, it gives us good evidence too when we file against them.
Yeah, I think, you know, they have to use their best judgment on that and it's, you know, especially with some of these with Spectrum and Aptiv, they were a little bit more aggressive too. Maybe it made some sense to do that, I don't know that we want to be calling on every single time, but it does give the, you know, the residents or the homeowners something that they can do rather than just calling you guys and waiting for it to get processed. It can, plus it at least probably would scare them away for the moment.
Right.
Before we get to this, I'd like to be back to the detention pond. Mike and I talked to Wendy about the LED lighting tariff. And that is, tariff is the word, it's gotta be, there's no cost to us. They want us to basically say, hey, as lights burn out, we're gonna have them replacing with LEDs. No upfront cost to us, and actually our monthly, we'll go down, should go down.
Oh, that was the question, right? Are we going to see reduction?
Yeah, the use of power will actually go down. You know, the other option was, in some communities like Geneva and Lake, they are, they want all others replaced at one time so it looks the same. So they're paying 150 or something per fixture to get them upgraded. But you know, for us to go forward with saying, yes, we want you to replace them with LEDs when they burn out, there is no cost to us and over time, we'll transition to all LEDs.
So I guess it would be a cost analysis from a business standpoint is, $150, X how many light poles? What is the, if we do it all at once, what's our immediate savings, right? Does that savings within a year make up the difference? If not, then there's, I would say the option would be just go as they go out.
Well, and she was saying that if communities get on board with, hey, replace them all now and we'll pay for them, they're going to have a hard time getting that done. So they'll always staff for that, but it is an option, so.
I would think the only reason to do that would be is if you're going to see an immediate savings that would be net.
Well, and she was saying was, we have high pressure sodium and mercury lights out on the street now. The mercury maybe are the oldest.
Yeah.
They're actually more efficient than LEDs.
Oh, than LEDs?
Yes.
Wow.
So she said, taking the, taking the mercury ones to LEDs, actually is going to cost, it's cost slightly more, but taking the high pressure sodium out and putting LEDs will be a big savings, so.
Yeah, those are huge.
She was, she was also going to try to get us the list of all of our lights with identification as, they can tell which ones are mercury, they know.
Yeah, I have that, I'm sorry if you wanted it.
Okay, because you said this would be a good time to look at our lighting districts to reevaluate those. That was, Mike was here to.
When you say lighting districts, that's the neighborhoods?
Yes, yes.
Okay, what will we look at?
Do we do it one district at a time, what's this cost, what's the cost savings, so?
Well, okay, that's one thing I think.
So we are paying X amount for this street. We're assessing, we're assessing property owners this amount for this street. We know our actual cost is not that, we can then go back and adjust.
And adjust it to actual cost too.
I thought Mike was looking at that at one point, but.
Tell you what.
Yeah, no, okay, so detention pond, Tim, we have a letter that EnviroScience sent to Tim Miller earlier this month. There's a lot of stuff in it and I was somewhat confused, I figured we'd talk about it today. So I called Sheila from EnviroScience yesterday or two days ago to talk to her and say, what are you really telling us in this letter? And basically the gist of it is, there's a lot of water coming out of the pines subdivision in those sewers that go into the railroad ditch and go underneath the railroad that isn't controlled. And there is less than a foot of, of fall or drop from those storm sewers to the pipe that goes underneath the railroad. So building a detention basin doesn't really work to control that flow because you only have, you have less than a foot of storage capacity, plus you got to run the pipes to the basin. So building the basin that you have a binder screen, we got the land for from the golf course, isn't going to help any of the water coming out of the pines. So what they're suggesting is, we've got those, like three ponds up in the golf course area, enlarge those, clean those up to create some storage there for flood control and then do underground storage detention here. This is the driveway that goes back to the pool for pines. And basically with that is you dig a hole and you fill, you put chambers down there that the water can flow into, so you have a big void with a bigger drop. No additional drop, just, there's just additional storage there to pick up a lot of the water from the pine subdivision. She said, she believes that doing an underground detention here is going to be a bigger benefit than doing those, cleaning those ponds out, even making that pond area bigger. She said, this, doing an underground detention up here would give you some additional storage, but because it's in the road, in front of houses, more utilities, that's got a lot of additional issues with it. She really thinks this one is, is the key. Along with cleaning out those three other ponds, making it a little bit bigger, she still likes stream restoration and plantings.
How are we just getting to this now? This is the conversations I had with these people three years ago. So, and now that drawing though, excuse me for a second, let me go up here and point to this thing. So that ditch that we just paid stormwater to clean out last year and they cleaned out, which was never cleaned out according to stormwater, that was all the water coming off of Dufton and Lannard. So it went along the railroad tracks back to, in here somewhere. And then, maybe even further, and then it, so they dug all that out, they cleaned it all out. And that was supposed to be where that water went to initially. And that's, I mean, that's like 10 feet deep. And then, so all that was supposed to go in there. So it's great they're doing this now, but for God's sakes, I mean, I sat at that doggone table with these people and had these conversations. The proposal they came up with to bring the water over and the basin that we're putting over here is, is for the water coming off of Lannard and Redford, that whole portion of it. None of this was addressed, and so we asked that question, well, what about this? And stormwater, even like, yeah, so that's why we went out there, none of this was even addressed. So that's why we went out there for them to clean that. And they said, well, that was supposed to be where all that water went to. Now they're talking about doing another one, which I like, and running the water to the big basin, which is what we like. But for God's sakes, what are we going to get on with this stupid thing? How many is that gotta be?
At least by their says, you're not running it, the big pond is creating a holding chamber.
So this, this big holding chamber to detain, it'd be like a pond, I mean, it's.
Underground pond essentially.
And then it eventually routes back out into the ditch and under. So, and I asked her, I said, the biggest question could be, how quick can we have shovels in the ground to move forward? Because we thought it was going to be earlier this year.
Right.
It all went quiet. What is the holdup? So they said, they are ready to move and finalize plans. And so what do you need from us or stormwater? Somebody's probably have to say, I think it's us telling stormwater, hey, we want to move forward now and we are on board with the idea of, of doing this proposed underground detention, cleaning up those other ponds to create some detention and moving forward. And we really want to start it this year. And she didn't seem like it was, would be an issue to get it started.
All right, so let's hang on a second, Josh, so this is really interesting. So you had a conversation with them, I've had conversations with, with Tim Miller just about two weeks ago, maybe, three weeks ago. I spoke to Tim Miller and I asked the same question. What's the holdup? Where are we at? What's the status? Can you provide something? I'm not sure where we're at. Mike, can you ask Tim? We just had this again, I mean, come in, talk to us, what do we, what do we need? I mean, black and white, we're all about the thing done.
I think Josh is there, he's kind of.
Yeah, but they're telling me to say so, then timeout. So if I, hang on, so if I've been attending those meetings, and Mike, I see you're getting frustrated, but for God's sakes, if I've been attending these meetings and now Josh is going to them and talking to them, and I mean, we're, we're all talking to them, but we're getting multiple, multiple communication channels. Bring them in, talk to all three of us at the same time, bring in EnviroScience.
All the players.
All the players, talk to all three at the same time. If we've got to go into executive session or a formal, not executive session, if we've got to go to a formal meeting for us all three to talk, let's just do it, this is absolutely ridiculous.
I think what's happening is, we've got, Chuck's talking to Tim, right? Josh talking to EnviroScience.
Well, and I spoke to EnviroScience before.
Okay, so we got two talking to two and then not getting the same answers, and now I think.
Something to do.
Yeah, so the point is to connect everybody together and lay it all out and say, let's talk about this so we don't have to go back and forth like ping pong, we can just have a flat conversation.
What might have happened is, the discussion, you have Tim spurred him to contact them.
Right.
Because this letter to Tim is dated a week ago, I think it's July 14th. And there was a lot of information in there that I was kind of fuzzy on, and that's why I called EnviroScience. Look, what are you telling us here? So, did we get that letter? How did you get the letter? It was in Mike's folder. I mean, we want to, my thought being, I don't want to wait another month to our next meeting. We schedule a special meeting, see if we can get EnviroScience and Tim Miller here, with us. So we, yeah, so we can say, okay, they can present this to us, yes, we want to move forward. Now, we want to start, finish the plans, we want to get this up to bid this fall and go.
I said, yes, a year ago.
Because now we're done, there's nothing going to happen this year. Well, bid wise, but I don't think, do you think, how do we get?
You can do this in the winter time.
Oh, really?
Okay. So, yeah, I think we need. I'll work on it. Because I asked Sheila from EnviroScience, what do you need? We need somebody to tell us what you want to do and to go. Okay, well, okay.
Set it up.
But it's not going to be the gigantic pond that we've all envisioned, is what she is saying. She still wants the idea of plantings. And I said, well, let's maybe we do that in a phased approach where we can do plantings down the road, because.
But I think that's a discussion that, like you said, we should, we should all together because now it's, you're talking to her, she's talking to Tim, Tim's, you know, now we're all playing this game and it's like, we don't know where we're at really, so. I'm fascinated to get everybody together in one room and just hatching it out.
And let them know when you set this up that the idea is to come out of the meeting with direction and somebody starting to move.
Welcome them.
All right, Michael, you got anything else on your agenda?
Community events was added.
So funds looks as good next year, we can do it?
Yeah.
It's not like a next three months, next year thing?
A year from now, there's no penalty, no cut, they were very cooperative about it, it's easy to understand.
Yeah, I know at this point, I guess.
All right, let's move on to Chief Huffman, Chief? You're muted.
All right, I think that's better, sorry about that. Yeah, other than, you know, the COVID issues that we worked through, one of the other things to consider that I just wanted to bring up was one of the guys did test negative, but when he, when he was tested, he was concerned about taking it home to his home and he wanted to be, if he was positive, be quarantined. We do have a hotel facility that we can send people, but there is a cost associated with it. Basically, we have to pay the cost of a discounted room, which is like 80 bucks a night. It would be for 14 days, so, and again, I believe that would be probably, I just, I'm pretty sure covered under the CARES Act also. But I just wanted to bring that up, that if we had to come up, if we had to do something like that, that would be an additional expense for that CARES money.
It falls under the CARES money, it would be a no brainer, I would think, you know?
Right, yeah, it is, I mean, it is listed under there for quarantine facilities, but I just wanted to bring it up that that's, you know, what we, that's another expense to look at for the CARES money. The repair work for Station 3, the north wall is done. Looks really, it looks like new, like better, better than new because we know, now we know it's waterproof. They've got all of the scaffolding torn down and now it's set up on the south wall of the base, so they started working on that. They said it should be done quicker than the north wall simply because they've got, they should have better weather from this point on than when they've started the other one, which was like in March, and then they had other delays because of, you know, other issues. Squad's painted, I did see some pictures they sent me. They're putting it back together because everything was disassembled on it again when they painted it. Now they're putting it all back together, hopefully we'll see it this week. The Station 1 guys started remodeling, I guess you could say, the old training room in the back, which was the old township offices. They've had training in there forever, but the, the room itself has been kind of a catch-all for, catch-all for junk. It's been, it's just, it was kind of a disgusting room, even though they'd sit in there and watch films there. But they tore it all out, they're, they took the, the ancient wallpaper, they're repainting everything. Going to retile it and, and make it a suitable training room, so they're doing that themselves. Let's see, the new tools, they're in service now. We did training on them last week. We had cars donated to us by Kings. Brought three cars over here to Station 3, we put them in a back lot. We, our guys were able to work on, you know, extrications, you know, using the tools from the cars they brought us, and then Kim, Kings picked it up and took that stuff away. And then Station 1, again, keeping the station separated, Station 1 was able to do it over Bob's garage. They had three cars on their lot that they let us come tear apart. So, you know, again, we appreciate both what Kings and Bob's did by donating cars and hauling them around for us.
If you haven't, can you get something out of the Facebook?
Yeah, I have not, but I will make sure that does. And also, like I said, I'll make sure that wet gets put on there too. I just found out that, like I said yesterday, that they, they did disinfect our station and didn't charge us for that, which is really a nice thing. So, yeah, so we, you know, I'll make sure that gets put on there too. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief, and they got questions for Chief. All right, let's go to Service Director, Mr. Thompson.
Okay, Ryan Goldman is a summer worker, he worked with us last year. He went, did his senior year of high school and his plan was he was going to enroll in CEI lineman school. And he was all set for that to happen and because of the COVID, they cut the class in half and he didn't make the cut. So he's kind of in limbo now. He asked me, would he be able to stay with us a little bit longer this summer than normally? And I'm okay with it. We only got one summer out this year, the other guy decided he didn't want to do it. I tried to find, reached out to two other people, couldn't, just sent the one, so.
He's painfully employed?
Pardon?
You've got work for him to do.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'd like to keep him through September.
That'll probably help with your vacations too.
Yeah, and it's his second year, so he, now he knows.
He knows what he's doing.
He knows what he's doing, he knows where the roads are, I don't have a problem sending him by himself to do some grass cutting.
No bummer at all, no problem.
Okay, good with that. We'll just go to the speed trailer results quickly, just. On Normandy, out of 4,857 vehicles, 2,877 of them were speeding.
Do you find speeding, do we talk a one mile per hour over or do we talk to five over?
Zero to five, wasn't it?
Let's see, most of them were between 25 and 35, so.
That's not speeding. Well, yeah, I mean, well, 30, 35, 30, yeah, yeah.
But then when we got over to Big Rock, 1,013 vehicles and four of them were exceeding the speed limit.
Oh, that's good.
So, and I know that Big Rock was the place where the, the, the kids were playing in the road and the, and the parent had an argument with somebody about going too fast, but I don't know, only four cars in, in a week were exceeding.
Do you choose the bands that it notifies you on? Or does that default in the system?
Can you set it to five, can you set it to five foot, five mile an hour increments instead of 10?
Or can you set it to like 20, yeah, like 30 to 35 versus 25 to 35?
I, I don't know, I think that might be the default one.
That's what I'm getting, default.
And then it, it measures each, you know, in that increment, how many cars and it even tells you what time of day it was, so.
Like Josh said, 25 to 30 is, that's questionable because, you know, speedometer could be for that little bit, but once you get over that 30, then you're speeding. So I think it'd be more useful to see like a 30 to 35 range versus a 25 to 35 if possible.
Yeah, well, on Normandy, it had, it showed nobody going over 45, so.
What'd you say?
No, nobody was going over 45 on.
I would hope not, but.
Well, they do on Palmer, I mean, they.
Yeah, I would say 50, right?
Oh, my God.
I think you said people were 50.
The trailer's on Amberwood now.
So now it's on Amberwood because the resident called and the complaint on Amberwood was the FedEx, UPS, Amazon drivers were flying down the road, so.
So that was a request, okay.
Yeah, so it was a request, so we'll put there for we can see. And then I will, if it's okay, they've got an active Facebook HOA, I can share that information. Yeah, the resident, she can let the people know that.
We had that issue over, FedEx and UPS got out of handle during speed, man, it's crazy.
So anyway, it's coming in handy and it's working well.
Good, it's good.
Because it will record, will record your speed if you're running. I run that fast, huh?
Six, six to seven miles an hour.
It won't.
I just wonder you said that because I was wondering that the other day, because one car turned and it was like six, seven. I'm like, I wonder if a person is big enough for this, that's what I'm thinking of, yeah.
We have it set so it won't display the light until fifteen miles an hour.
So, you gotta be like.
That's not saying it isn't registering it, but it's not showing the light. So, you'd have to, I'd have to be chasing you before it's going to show up, John.
It's Sony on.
White has to be chasing them.
Where's the sheriff at there? Somebody's.
Fairfield, right now.
That's what it was. I was, I ran around Fairfield one day.
Wouldn't say three, four?
No, that's when it said six or seven. That's what I'm, yeah.
Ran from home over there?
No, that's quite a ride.
I'll tell you after.
Okay.
Okay, so now we get to the good stuff. The OPWC project has been a lot of issues. A lot of base repair needed to be done. Because they were going deeper with the base repair, some of the pipe that was in there, the crossover storm sewers, were galvanized pipe or great tile, which meant they weren't going to be strong enough. So, they had to be replaced. When we got into the cul-de-sac, there were so, the base was so bad on that cul-de-sac, as they went deeper, they were going to get close to a water line. Called the Utilities Department, the Utilities Department said it's the old transite water line. If you even breathe on it, it's going to break. And if you break it, it's your project, you've got to replace it.
It's asbestos, transite's got asbestos.
Yes.
Nice.
So, they decided rather than do that, we won't put as much base in and will replace just the cul-de-sac and concrete. So, bottom line is the.
Oh, you're saying they did the rest of the road in asphalt?
Just the cul-de-sac, it would be concrete.
Yeah.
Because of, for that reason.
Do we really want that? We don't have many options. Can't make that asphalt as well?
No, because we would have had to then replace the water line.
Oh, so it's less deep than on concrete than it is asphalt?
Yeah, the base couldn't, yeah, the concrete.
Oh, I thought it was supposed to be all concrete, but it was less, so they were going asphalt.
So, anyway, the cost overruns on that were two hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred dollars over what the awarded bid price was.
Two hundred and twelve thousand?
Yes, yes.
So, they already came back to us with what, the first one hundred and thirty, was it?
Yeah, that was just for the undercuts, the base repair on Bridger Lane.
So, now that's up higher.
And it got worse as they got onto Morgan, and then when they got on the Bridle path.
So, let me, let me ask this. So, in the past, the engineer's estimate for point of discussion, we're using general number, six hundred thousand, and then we always come in at four eighty, right?
Yes.
So, let's say it was six hundred again, the paving would have come in at four eighty, but now we got two hundred, so we're at six eighty. Do we still get up to the six hundred?
No. With, the way that grant works, when you apply for the grant, and I've got the numbers here. So, the engineer's estimate was, sorry, the bid amount was six sixty-three, four thousand. OPWC paid forty-five percent of that. So, that was two ninety-eight, five thirty. So, it was almost a three hundred thousand grant. So, these overruns this year, they ended up paying another fourteen hundred dollars to get us to the three hundred thousand.
That's what I was getting at.
So, we maximized the grant.
So, we maximized three hundred, that's why I was asking, so we maximized our money.
Yes, yeah, all right.
Why only forty-five, it was fifty, fifty, so.
Because the engineer's estimate was.
High.
Was higher, so the three hundred, whatever the three hundred thousand is, percentage of.
We always ask for three hundred thousand, because that's, you lose a point if you go above that. We always ask for three hundred thousand, it just depends what percentage of the overall is.
So, on all, on all, we're coming out of pocket.
But we're okay, because we have it, because we use this money out of the gas tax and two license plate taxes, we have it. There wasn't an OPWC application this year because of the COVID. So, we will, at this point, we are not going to have a project in 2022.
We've already been approved for a 2021 project, right?
So, we know that. We should be signing that project agreement today. And so, even though we're going to spend a little bit more this year, in two years, we're not going to have a project, so we'll be able to recoup.
So, twenty and twenty, twenty twenty-two, we're doing nothing?
Well, we may decide to do a project on our own, but it won't be, there isn't an OPWC program for that year.
So, we have recently been doing OPWC to replace a concrete road with asphalt, and then we've used the township levy money to do some asphalt pavement, right? That's what we did this year, and probably next year we'll do the same thing. And then in 2022, we might only do that, the asphalt, or maybe something, yeah.
I have been very happy with Trimore's, the one doing this project. I have gotten no complaints. I know a couple complaints came in here to Town Hall about some metal that was in the base they were using, because they're using recycled concrete for some of the base. That was a problem. Once the workers found out that it was out there, they went through and collected another bag full of it. That's something we can address moving forward next year.
Off topic, the county had a permit inch done, and they didn't pave it, they just did tar.
I heard you drove through it right after they parted.
I'm like, why did you have it open? Dude, what a mess, tar all up and down the side of my car, and my running board when I got home, literally was just a layer of gravel. It was unbelievable, what a. I am surprised they did that in that area, they didn't pave it.
That, to Bill's point, Trimore, they've given us pricing for items that weren't in the original scope. Typically, contractors try to gouge you on those. I've gone through all those numbers, and they're all right in line with where I would expect them, even the numbers that came in yesterday. I mean, I really expected them to inflate things. I look for things that I can pick at to say, no, you need to lower this, that. They've been very fair with the pricing on all the items.
Because of the problems with the base, these people have been inconvenienced a lot longer.
Residents, yeah.
The residents. And Trimore's doing everything they can to accommodate them, and I think everybody's okay, okay with it. So, I compliment them. I did get Carbo to come back and address the burn complaints on Nelmar, and how do I want to say this, they have fulfilled their contract. But if there are still people that aren't happy, I will send my guys back and do it. They did what the contract required them to do, they may not have done it as well as we would have done it, and if there's anybody that still isn't happy, we'll go back.
So, had you not told me that they were out there and they did the work, and Ted said they did the work that day, and I ran down there that night, I wouldn't have known they were out there. It didn't look that much different to me, but.
Well, I saw what they raked out of there, and I saw what they shoveled out of there, so.
So, yeah, so you didn't know what.
They still have to go back and deal with two driveway aprons that were a little bit low.
And we're going to address the one kid?
Yes, yeah, so.
One kid? Probably, last name. So, the other ones, then, that one area where I received the complaint from a couple of the residents, that whole area, and that's actually where your uncle lives, that whole area of Nelmar is just horrible. So, if they're not satisfactory to what we would do, you're going to fix it?
Yep.
And what do you think you've been getting to that?
We can't touch it until contractors sign off and out.
Okay, so.
And then they will have to reach out to me to let me know who it is that still would like.
All right, so the next question, Jeremy or Jason. Very displeased with this current contractor, Carbo. They tend to come in as the lowest bidder every time, or almost every time. When we have issues like this one, where we're not satisfied with the work, what is our legal process going forward if we choose not to select their bid due to the quality of work on prior jobs?
You're talking about for future, so for future bids, if they were the lowest bidder?
Yes.
We are, and I know we sent, I believe we've sent you guys over the legal memo on that. We don't always have to pick the lowest because it's the lowest and best, and we can resend you that memo if you want to take a look at it. But basically, you have to have a reason that you can articulate as to why you didn't pick somebody. And obviously, the easiest thing to defend is, you know, we picked the lowest one, so it's obviously always easier to defend if somebody comes in later, if they file a complaint, anything like that. But if you have a reason that you can articulate, you can pick somebody that's not the lowest because you think they're going to be the best. And prior, past, not good performance is a pretty decent reason to not pick the person that's the lowest, if we've used them before and didn't use them. And Jason, if you want to add a little more color to that, but basically, it's, you know, if you have a reason you can articulate, we're fine not picking the lowest. You probably open yourself up more to getting a complaint or something from them for not getting picked. And, but as long as we can articulate, a court's generally going to defer to your guys' judgment on what you think was best. And that's a pretty good reason, is we've used them before and we're not happy with their work in the past. So, that's a pretty concrete reason. So, that can be done. You know, it opens yourself up a little bit more to possibly getting a complaint from somebody, but you have a pretty good reason. And generally, if that got to court, and that's what our whole sole purpose here of advising you guys on, if we got to court on something like that, the court's generally going to defer to your guys' judgment on who you select.
Jeremy, I just forwarded you an email, I forwarded it to Chuck and Gabe too. I sent it to Mike and Bill, I think, a week ago.
Yeah.
About, actually, it was for me to our representative of the county engineer's office, expressing my displeasure with the contractor, Carbo, on his particular job for several reasons. Because I wanted to have something in writing. I, that email said, feel free to forward to the contractor so they know. My timing probably was bad because it was the day before, they were scheduled to come back out to do some of this additional work, which I didn't know. I mean, my thought is, once the project's closed out, should we write a letter to Carbo expressing our displeasure with their performance on this project? Just so that they're aware and they're not surprised next year if they did. And, yeah, is that a good idea, bad idea, something to consider?
Um, that's probably a good idea. Let us confer a little bit on whether or not we think it is or how we want to do it. And I'd probably want to take a look at it before it goes out, too, whatever.
Yeah.
Because that would be, you know, we're talking about, again, we're always looking forward to a few steps ahead if we ever end up in court. If we end up in court, that's a little piece of evidence that they had noticed. Yeah, we definitely want to take a look at it. I see that you got the email, I will definitely take a look at that, that'll probably be helpful too. And that, that probably, that email should be pretty good too, since it was a little more contemporaneous to when the issue was happening. But, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, let's have some more discussions about this going forward. Let's always discuss it a little bit before, if you guys are thinking about not taking it, when that letter goes out, we'll take a look at it. But, yeah, I think, off the top of my head, I think that probably would be a good idea. But I want to take a look at it and think about it a little bit more.
Bill, you've got the issues all documented? You've got a record on this cycle?
Yeah, definitely keep any of those kind of records that we can. So, again, it's probably something we'll never have to use if Carbo doesn't get picked and they don't, you know, sue us or anything for it, then we're never going to have to necessarily worry about using those. But on the off chance that it does happen and we need contemporaneous records of what was happening and why we didn't want to pick them, it definitely will be helpful.
Last thing I have, the salt bids came in. Last year, they were at sixty-three thirteen, this year they came in at forty-seven ninety-eight, like a little fifteen dollars less. If we use all fifteen hundred tons, we'll save twenty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars. I do think it's interesting that Compass Salt Company got the bid. Their mine is in Ontario, so they can mine it in Ontario. Voted across the lake to the dock and asked you to buil and truck it to us, cheaper than Morton can get it from the Grand River Mine to us.
Can take it out and dump it in a truck at the top of their mine.
Yeah, so.
So, unbelievable.
So, if we can accommodate it all, we probably want to take a hundred and ten percent this year. If we have the room in the end, we definitely would want to.
You know, I know last year sixty, what was it the year before, wasn't it like?
Two years ago, it was at forty-four dollars.
And then what was it the year before that?
Sixty-two.
So, it seems like sixty, forty-five, sixty, yeah, a little gain, if like, huh?
Yeah, so, anyway, and that's all I have.
Are we talking about CARES Act spending later?
If we, it was deferred.
Do we, did we ever, that settlement that happened years ago, did we ever get money from that? The salt, the salt, like they were like price fixing, price fixing, did we ever get a payout?
We got a check.
There's supposed to be a payout to us, like, the Attorney General sued the salt companies, and they class action sued. No, it was before Dewine, it was during casing. Oh, you're saying Dewine was Attorney General, right? And they got a bunch of money, like millions of dollars, they're supposed to distribute, and it wasn't much, it was supposed to be like fifteen grand, I think, or something, but.
I don't believe we ever got a check.
I don't, I don't remember.
All right, can somebody look into that just?
I was curious whatever happened to that money, now that it brings up salt prices.
Good question. Okay, anything else, Bill?
That's all I have.
All right, so I want to touch on staffing and discuss.
We've got zoning, you got a couple of pictures on it.
Okay, that's fine. So, I want to discuss staffing and with COVID, and I'm going to get all the specifics right now, but Fire Department's going to be going to a different staffing level again because of COVID. Same thing I would like to see happen for the Road Department, we don't have to get into the specifics right now, but if, with the spike going on, if we get people in there, you're all working together, potentially, it could be you shut down the whole department, obviously, we don't want that. So, thoughts?
I like where you're just doing two to a truck, and they're not mixing with the other guys, except if they're on an outdoor job site, right?
That's what, that's what we're doing now, yeah.
I think that, I would be.
We're social distancing in the garage, keeping everybody separate and cleaning the stuff, and then they're out on the job.
Still not using the lunchroom?
Yeah, there's three tables in the lunchroom and three guys, one guy at each table.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if you have other ideas, I guess, I defer to you, like Frank is taking care of the Fire Department, if you see something you want to do. I mean, I would, I'd say it's congested at the beginning and end of the day, if you want to consider half an hour stagger between, you know, these four guys come in at seven, these four guys come in at seven thirty.
But what he's doing doesn't upturn their lives, right? They're just going to stations, it doesn't matter. What you had done before completely changed everybody's lifestyle in the sense of Saturdays, all these days. So, my belief is, if you're doing stick of the two, which is inevitable anyways, they're not congregating, you're staying separate. Personally, I believe what you're doing is sufficient in the sense that there's no reason to upturn their lives again if what we're doing is. And they're out working, get outside only, they're not inside, like Fire Department, so.
It's a lot of other paths crossing during the daytime, with the potential for cross-contamination to go if somebody's, if somebody gets symptoms.
I guess, well, when they ride, when, before, there's only two guys in the truck and they're wearing masks. For that, but, I mean, when they're out on the job, I mean, I don't know. If somebody needs help picking something up, they might be close to each other, but other than that, I mean, if a guy's in a tractor and another guy's shoveling the asphalt, and the other guy's rolling the asphalt, or it's kind of a, you know, if they're cutting grass, one guy's cutting grass, one guy's using a string trimmer.
And, you know, and I think that based on the information that's given us from all the different, the Fire Department is in way higher risk because they're indoors, close proximity, said period of time, which poses your biggest risk based on the science of it. You guys, is the opposite end of the spectrum, outdoors, away from each other, poses the least. So, I believe what, my opinion is what you're doing, it's good that he's doing that, I think that makes sense. My opinion, what you're doing, I think states should state, I think it works well without changing anything.
I agree, I think if Bill sees something that is, would cause concern.
Yeah.
Now, as we go into the fall and winter, we'll keep tabs on it and really, it becomes super critical as the snow flies. All right, so before we move on to zoning, let me just say I'm uncomfortable with it, support the decision, but anything you can do to separate folks, staggering of work hours, minimize times, anybody's together other than those partners continue to please to do. So, and as Josh says, the biggest concern comes when we start pushing snow clouds, so let's go get this again as time goes on. All right, so zoning is a pressing issue, let's move on to zoning. Who wants to go?
I'll go, Joe.
Frozen.
Not wanting to be outdone, Joe Speed, also wants to talk about a.
You keep freezing, Rich.
Huh?
Your internet. Are you talking to Rich?
Yes.
Rich, Rich?
Okay, or, or Rich, can you, what if he shuts off his video? Would that help? Less bandwidth?
What, what am I doing wrong here?
You're freezing up, Rich, continually freezing.
Hit, hit what again?
Read that one.
I, I did.
Going now, maybe.
Top left, okay. Okay, let's, let.
Just go. Go, Rich.
I, okay.
Right at the top, Rich, go back.
Riverwood.
Can, can you see the the revised plan?
No, no.
No, okay.
I can remember that. Is it the one in your reports, Rich, right?
It's the same one that's in my report, yeah.
Mike, Mike is gonna bring that up.
Okay.
He's sticking back in the corner for these meetings.
No. Did I hit the prevent now?
Go ahead, Rich, I got the, the, the drawing up here.
Okay. Um, well, anyhow, we had reserved this area in the back of the development for possible storage units. Uh, Joe Speed says they've been getting some feedback from the people who have been buying these units. And they're uncomfortable with the fact that total strangers could possibly drive through the development to get the storage units that they happen to rent back here. So Joe was trying to figure out, well, what is the best way to go? Um, and, and what's gonna make everybody the most comfortable, so he, he's willing to give up the idea of the commercial, giving up the commercial area. And he's proposing to add about twenty-eight more residential units to finish off this development.
He said what's gonna make everybody happy, it's like what's gonna make them the most money, but.
That's okay. Just get, get houses in there and get rid of those commercials.
Who said what?
That's fine. So they want to do houses there instead of commercial?
Correct.
Was there, I thought I saw, I remember a site plan, maybe it was an old one that had, an old, old one had a pool. Was there a playground facility?
Playground in the dog park area are up, uh, oh, in, in, in a different section of this development, up in the, uh, the closed area, up above the cul-de-sac, the first cul-de-sac.
Okay, and is that in already? Did they already build that?
They's, yeah, I'm, I'm sure they already built that.
Okay, because I've been out there, it's been a while since I've been out there, but I didn't see it. Just talking for myself, I'm okay with the change for all residential, but before they do any more of that, I would like to see some of those amenities that they promised put in. Um, the, the playground and if there's a dog park, whatever it may be, if there's walking trails still, I don't know. But I would like to see all that go in before they get approval to do more houses because.
Okay, so just, just as a refresher for you, um, this is gonna take a consent decree amendment. So what, what I'm gonna tell Joe is that you're receptive to the idea, uh, and, and I'll double check, but I, I'm pretty sure those amenities are already installed on, on that development. Um, and we'll have him propose, uh, propose the amendment and then we, we, we can study his document and uh, Jeremy and Jason can help us make revisions as we see fit. And eventually, you know, we'll go back and forth on revising the proposed amendment before we file it with court, with the court to make sure that we're all on the same page. But this could probably be one of those paper negotiation things going back and forth until we get it done. Uh, everybody on board with that?
Yes, yes, let them cover our legal issues too.
Okay, next, next item, uh.
Rich, when you, if you email him to ask him for that, if you could just CC us on the email, make sure we're on the whole conversation.
Okay, okay.
So that was Riverwood. Okay, what's next, Rich?
The, the next thing is the zoning text case. Um, I'm, I'm back in the meeting now, okay. Uh, the zoning text cases is very simple. Uh, we're just adding a requirement that somebody who's demoing a building on a property with no immediate plans to build a new structure to replace it, is gonna be required to get a zoning permit. We're suggesting a, a, a minimal fee of twenty-five dollars for that permit, just so that we can track um, buildings that are leaving the face of the properties. Um, so you're receiving that from the zoning commission today. Uh, we'll need to set a public hearing, uh, for probably the August eighteenth meeting. And that's, that's pretty much that. If, anybody have any questions on that?
So we, we're gonna.
Okay.
Wait, no, whoa, not done yet.
Okay.
Is that something we're gonna set in the, uh, trustee section today? We're gonna set us, or are you gonna request it when we get to the zoning section?
What? Oh.
Setting the public hearing.
Well, uh, how, how, how do you want to do it? How, how do you want to do it? It, it was the agenda set up already?
Oh, it is. I was, I was looking, because it's not in this resolution here, but it's in there. Okay, never mind.
Okay, okay. Uh, let's see, we had, we had quite an interesting border zoning appeal session last Tuesday. Uh, they had six cases, four of which they approved, two of which they denied. When they denied one for a residential gravel driveway, uh, Harley and I were, uh, taken, taken quite by surprise. Um, after the borders zoning appeal voted unanimously to deny, uh, that variance, um, Tom Hill suggested that the applicant talk to Harley and I in the aftermath of that decision. And, and, uh, work something out and possibly, uh, en- engage the trustees in, in working something out. So the next day, the applicant called and got Harley on the phone. And Harley, uh, did one of those impulsive things, uh, and, and told him he could have a year, uh, to, to put asphalt down. And, and then she let me know that she did that, and, and I was uncomfortable, uh, that, that's, it's not good solid stuff. Uh, we can't, I, I don't want to ask the trustees to condone us not enforcing some part of the zoning. That's, that's not good policy. Um, I, 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 I think both of us are conscientious and don't want to make a public, um, impression, create a public impression that we won't enforce something that technically has to be enforced. So what Harley and I, uh, are proposing is that we encourage the applicant to submit a new application. We would like the trustees to agree with us that maybe this is one of those cases that the BZA needs to take a closer look at. Um, I, I was so convinced in my mind that there was information I could have offered during the hearing, but I never thought it was necessary until each, each member of the BZA voted no. Uh, so anyhow, we, we would like you to authorize waiving the fee if, if the applicant on this particular case submits a new application to the border zoning appeals.
If, uh, real quick, what was the basis? You seem surprised that they denied it. So what was the basis for denial and why did it surprise you?
Be, because the, uh, this is a very complicated issue. The, the person who used to own the property and continues to own a vacant parcel next door um, lost the property with this house on it to a bank foreclosure and is very, uh, has a great deal of animosity for the bank and anybody they sold the property to. This property owner, uh, felt that it was, uh, un- unfair that some guy could uh, waltz in and, and buy the house and put a gravel driveway in. Um, it, it, like I said, this is a very complicated, uh, deal. The, the, the former property owner actually created a lot split back when they, about six months after they acquired the property in, in two thousand, late two thousand, uh, and two, they acquired the property. About six months later, they, they did a property split. Uh, I, I have a copy of the survey by which the county did their lot split for them. It, it, it was a very unusual lot split and they stuck a property line right over the driveway. So part of the driveways on the vacant parcel that they retained and part of the driveway was on the property that they lost to a foreclosure eventually with the house on it. Um, so.
Today, Rich, we can get to the cup of the chase. What, what are you, what are you asking for us? To waive the, waive the variance fee?
Yes.
For the next area?
The reapplication.
For reapp.
Yeah, he wants to do, uh, real quick, um, he wants to do a reapplication and we felt, Rich felt that the board probably would have approved it if the application was for a temporary variance for that gravel driveway, if he agrees that he's going to eventually fix it. And so that we believe is what his next application would be, is for a temporary variance.
Okay, we're good, okay.
Okay.
Yeah. For me, it's the first lineup.
Thanks, Jeremy. I, I get too wound up sometimes. Okay, guys, that's, that's all I have. Harley, do you have anything else?
Yeah, it was the guy that's. Um, we are making headway with the new software. We are hopeful that end of August, we should be live with the new software. That's on the timeline that we are currently running. We'll be back in the office and be able to do a lot more work within there that they need completed on our side, um, so they can catch up. So we're, we're aiming for end of August for the software to live. Um, we are extremely busy in the zoning office. Just yesterday, yesterday alone, I have received twenty-four new zoning applications on my workload, not including Rich's. And twenty-four brand new applications that were submitted yesterday. Twenty-three rather, twenty-one, or one of those was this past weekend on time. But, so we people are just very dumb-honed about doing work on their property right now.
We have a few minutes, same community. Had a thing for under zoning, there was a thing for freeway pines. Did we already address all of that with the meeting we had this morning?
It was eight-thirty this morning.
Okay, yeah, I think that's, I, that's what I said.
Well, and, and the only reason I ask is I know in the folder there were also potential site plan or, or layout revision for other phases.
Yeah, because it says phase three, that was, that's not phase three that we discussed.
And that was, because they were gonna lose lots, if they relocated the roadway, they wanted, they wanted to add them somewhere else?
I believe what we discussed, isn't, isn't that roadway that connects to vacant phase three?
Rich, no more than.
Mike, can you pull, can you pull up the zoning folder?
No, it's phase three.
They're, they're currently in phase two now, so.
We. Yeah, I believe the roadway connection is phase three.
So what then? Okay, so then phase four is the back.
Freeway pines modification.
Yeah, that's.
Added lots in back or phase three, either one, open them both, I guess. I mean, what's, uh, they want to add lots here. I don't know where this came from.
I, I'm not aware of it.
Rich?
They, yeah, they, they, if, if the trustees had expressed any interest in splitting phase three into phases A and B, uh, leaving the building, diverting the roadway, they would lose two lots uh, by the diversion of the roadway. They would pick them up by reconfiguring some of the lots up, uh, in probably phase four or five. I'm not sure, but I think it's phase five.
So, so they weren't gonna lose any lots in, in the whole scheme of things, what they wanted, they wanted to save on the demolition cost for the building?
Even though, even though there's no cost of this.
I, I couldn't hear you, Josh.
Don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it. So, so their drawings off the table then, correct? There's no need to discuss?
Well, I, I, I thought, I thought the trustees were pretty clear that, uh, they're not really interested in leaving that building and making any changes in the original plan.
Okay, so no need to discuss this any further then. Thank you.
Okay.
We all have to log off and shut this off and then log into the new session.
Alright, so we're gonna end, it's almost time for the other meeting. If there's anything else anybody else has to offer, bring it up during your reports. We're gonna close this meeting and get ready to open up for the, uh, network meeting at eleven o'clock. So ten fifty-nine, we're closing. See you in a minute.